Well, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mayor.
Thank you. So good to see all of you here with us today. This beautiful, bright, shiny, the birds are singing, 25th day of June of 2024. All right, we are moving immediately into executive session. So at this time, City Council will hold an executive session for the purpose of consulting with city staff regarding the following: The purchase, exchange, sale, lease, or value of real property under 551-072 of the Texas Government Code, and personnel matters under Section 551.074 of the Texas Government Code. We do anticipate going to executive session. Should not be too long, coming back into work session, starting our regular agenda promptly at 3:00. And then we hope to see you back here, 3:00 o'clock, 2:30. Thank you. We are now recessed to executive session. All right, well, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mayor.
Thank you so much. We are coming back in from executive session. This time, we are reconvening into work session regarding presentation discussion on to discuss financing options, including bond indebtedness for public works projects and quality of life projects, and further discussion on streets and roads. So with that, I think I'm turning it over to you, Mr. Atkinson.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, City Council. Mayor, I think we may be short a couple of members at the moment.
All right, Mr. Atkinson?
Okay, thank you, Mayor, City Council. Couple of notes real quick. We're going to have a presentation on the screen. Council, the detail part of all of that is in a handout at your spot. We'll go ahead and jump right into the discussion, walk backwards just a little. So in 2022, the street bond that we are currently implementing today, City Council appointed a Citizens Advisory Committee. That group worked very quickly, worked with the staff, ultimately to bring back a recommendation, yes, you should, no, you should not, if you were, what would the bond look like, and obviously, the total cost. Council did accept those recommendations. The bond election was ordered. Would remind you, elections are done by ordinance, so we do have to have two readings if you choose to move forward on a potential November timeframe. The Citizens Advisory Committee had two citizens appointed by each council member, and then the mayor appointed a single member who also served as the chair. On the screen now, just again, is a little bit of history. This is who those members were. You can see those there. The bottom of the screen would highlight, in addition to ordering the election, the council also adopted a resolution at the same time. And that resolution really served as a contract with the voters, and it talked about how the bond would be implemented and how the dollars would move in there. On this slide, we have pulled the operative part of that resolution out. You do have the entire resolution at your dais. And it reads as follows: "The council commits that the funds from this 2022 bond program will strictly be used to complete, excuse me, the street and roadway projects listed in Exhibit A. Further, no funds from the program will be used for any other street or roadway project unless and until all projects in Exhibit A," that'll come up next, "are complete, or that funds for the completion thereof have been set aside. If the projects are complete and funds are remaining," the restriction then that came back to the council, self-imposed restriction, "the council would consider street and roadway improvement projects that are similar in nature to those listed in Exhibit A, and that matched, of course, what was in your bond election ordinance." Final restriction: Funds from the November 8, 2022 bond election shall not be used for street maintenance. So all of this was constructing something new rather than repairing something that was there. This is the list. This is what went to the voters in November of 2022, ultimately approved. Council will recall, it's a five-year implementation schedule to get all of these done. Would highlight a few of these that I think are relative today. Your 98th Street project, Alcove to Upland, it is under construction as we speak right now. You see two projects on 34th that are listed as back-of-curb projects. Those are actually winding up. They're coming to our conclusion on that. 146th Street, Quaker to Indiana. Council has recently awarded the construction contract for that project, and there will be dirt turning very soon. If you jump back up to Dunbar, Manhattan Heights, you have an item on your agenda today that is step two of three total steps for the Dunbar, Manhattan Heights rebuild. And then finally, you see the residential unpaved roadways towards the bottom, and that project also continues as well. So Council, the point of this being, you set out a contract with the voters. You ultimately approved a five-year schedule to do these projects, and we are on that schedule as we speak. In fact, not every agenda that you've seen this calendar year, but most, you see us doing right-of-way acquisition as we're leading into years three and four and five. So that is where that stands. Timeline. If the decision is to go forward, and the decision is to go forward on a November timeframe, you see here that Election Day is November the 5th. To call the election, you would have the period of time between August the 7th and August the 16th. You do have two scheduled meetings within that period of time. August the 7th is the third day of your budget workshops. You could also, you could step aside, convene as a meeting, and consider an ordinance. And August 13th is your first regular meeting, so you could fit two calls in there if you chose to do that. Last slide before I turn it over for your input and comment. If you choose to do this, choose to use the Citizens Advisory Committee again, this is kind of a starting point for them. So there was quite a bit of discussion last time. There was a $200 million cut line on the bond, but there was a list behind that of projects that still could be done. This is the next set of that list with one change. South Quaker, 146 to Woodrow Road was a project that was on this list. We have pulled it off simply because you are now in a developer's agreement to have that roadway constructed. So we did take that off of there. Simple point being, again, if decisions to go forward, there is a starting point. This is not an exhaustive list. There's another one that's deep behind that one. So Council, for staff standpoint, would just throw out a series of questions, and then I'll stop, and y'all can talk. Obviously, number one, yes or no, like to try to go forward on this timeframe? You wish to use a Citizens Advisory Committee? November the 5th, the date, again, I think your election call would be 8/7 and 8/13. And then we'll talk about committee appointments if that's ultimately where you end up. So Mayor, with that, I'll kick it back to you for council discussion.
All right, thank you, Mr. Atkinson. All right, so I think the first question posed was, and again, this is work session. We're not taking any action, but this is time to discuss. So is this a yes or no, moving forward with something that can get to the voters by November? Yeah, I think that's the question for discussion. Thoughts? Ms. Martinez-Garcia?
I think it's definitely a yes, that we take it to voters. The question that I have, is this concrete? Like, can we not make any type of modifications to what is presented?
100%, I expect modifications to be made. This, again, just represents what was below the line on the first one. It is a starting point for the committee to work on, if that's where you go.
Can you go back to the prior slide, please? The one with the Broadway and the other roads. Sorry. There it is. So I just think, I want to point out that when we start looking at project costs, just take the first line, 18 million in projected cost is 24 and a half. And I think that's why the answer would be yes for me. Because as we see these increasing costs, it's not going to do anything but exponentially grow in cost to the citizens, and we still have these major needs that are here. So I would be for, obviously, I'm not going to have a vote in this after today, but I would be for this. I think this is something we told the citizens a few years ago. We need to get a good cadence of bringing voter-approved projects to them that they vote on, that they have input in, and continuing to work on our infrastructure, which is streets and roads, which is one of the main jobs of us as a city council. Dr. Wilson?
Thank you, Mayor. I was going to echo that sentiment. I mean, as you see the growing project costs and everything, putting it off even further, I think is going to be a detriment to our city. Now, always trying to be fiscally conservative and making sure we don't have too much outstanding debt. You know, I think having a good committee in place to see where these needs really lie, and not just, you know, another $200 million bond out there until we move forward with more projects on the other one. But definitely, there are roads on this list that are so needed, and if we continue to put them off, the cost is just going to continue to escalate out of control to where it will be 200 million, and we only get a fraction of what's on this list. So I would definitely be in favor of moving forward with this.
Thank you, Dr. Wilson. Mr. Collins?
I just wanted to echo what's been said. I think it's very important that we do get on a cadence, a very good word, so that we're doing this regularly. And as we see, and we've got to start somewhere, but as we see going forward, projects roll off and debt roll off, we're ready to step back in with the next type of, next project, and allow us to be on a regular system. My question for the group who was here before, how many, do you think, very many of these folks who were a part of this committee earlier would be available to help us again? Because we wouldn't have as much ramp-up time for those individuals to tell us what we're doing, or what, you know, what they're recommending.
All right, thank you, Mr. Collins. You know, as to who's available, I don't know. I think that would be up to each individual district representative and council member to appoint. But if, you know, you wanted to reach out to those that were prior appointments, a lot of people might be willing to serve. I don't know if Heather Keister's going to want to do that again, but I'd be calling her. Ms. Patterson-Harris?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Collins, I would say to those individuals who were a part of the committee at that time, I feel as though the folks that I recommended would be ready and willing and able to be a part of such a group. In addition to that, what I want to say as we look at this list, one of the things that was drilled in to this, to the prior council as well as the citizens in this, in this city is that when we do things, we want to always bear in mind connectivity. And so when we look at the list here, what we have are some things taking place in several areas within the city. And that's something that I would hope that would resonate with the new council as you begin to make these decisions. That's what I'd like to say. But I'd say, if I, if a vote could be considered, I'd say definitely a yes. Because this city, when I came to be a part of this council, we were so far behind in things of this nature. The want list was so long. And so to be able to try to do it at a regular or consistent pace, I think is great. And I'd love to see it happen.
Thank you, Ms. Patterson-Harris. Anyone else with any comments? All right, I guess what I'm hearing, Mr. Atkinson, I think this is something worth continuing to move forward with exploration. And the advisory committee would be recommended, and that would be up to each individual council member as to appointments. Y'all think the last one worked? I mean, we passed it pretty resoundingly, so maybe the similar number, two per council? Maybe it's the same ones, maybe not? And then, you know, appointment chair, which would be appointed by the mayor. Of course, these are discussions y'all may have at some point. But I'm hearing that that is something that, and I think we're hearing that pretty resoundingly for the community. Broadway is needed. Broadway was needed last time, but we understood the nuances behind that and why the committee chose not to put that there, because the ask was so high. And maybe this isn't an ask of $200 million, but maybe it's a smaller number, but it gets some of these streets and roads that need to be done, and we continue to keep up. I think to Sheila's point, it was, it's been 13 or 15 years since there was a major street and road bond package, and I think that's what I'm hearing, that we need to...
From 2008 to 2022, I believe.
14 years. So we can't go another 14 years without that occurring, so. Anybody else have any questions? Ms. Martinez-Garcia?
I just want to make one more comment. You know, when I first came on, and that was an all, I know it was a new process for us, but I think as a newly-elected council person, it's great to pick new folks that are somewhat subject matter experts, or their, the matter is their neighborhood. And so I think it's good to have your recommendations. You learn a lot from that experience. And I know, moving forward, it would be good to have some new, fresh perspectives. So that's all I wanted to add. But I think it's definitely necessary, and I do have a couple of issues. But as we get to that advisory level, then I'll make sure that we bring that back around.
Ms. Patterson-Harris?
Are we going to do advisory recommendations today or tomorrow? Because if they're today, I have some. Tomorrow won't matter. So that's why I was wanting to know.
Well, that would be you and I both. So I say that, you know, put off what, put off till tomorrow, something that we don't have to do today.
So what I would suggest, Council, then, I will work with the mayor-elect. We'll be the mayor later this evening. And we would try to get you an item on an agenda as soon as possible to consider the appointment of an advisory committee. That'd be your next step.
Well, and that would also be, if that's, then we, at some point, on some date, also the option for two of the council members to ask if that to be put as an agenda item.
Correct.
Right. So at some point, if that needs to move forward, we move forward with it. And I can't wait to see what Ms. Patterson-Harris and I can do to help, from the peanut gallery. All right, seeing no other questions or comments, thank y'all for putting that together. I think this is a really good thing moving forward. Any other questions of Jared or staff that we can answer, Council?
I also, pardon me. I also would like for us to consider a quality of life addition to this just because, you know, we have had a lot of input and, from, about swimming pools. And so there's definitely some other needs that we need to be thinking about. So quality of life, I think, is something, it's an opportune time. But if not now, then I hope that we would consider that in the near future.
All right, thank you, Ms. Martinez-Garcia. All right, seeing no other comments or questions of staff, I will recess. Well, I guess we'll recess till 3:00, and we'll start our regular agenda. And I look forward to seeing you all back here in about 10 minutes. We'll start back at 3:00. All right, we are ready to get started. Good afternoon. Thank you, thank you. So good to see everybody, thank you. Could always count on Ms. Patterson-Harris. Steve's here today to give me a good afternoon. We're starting, we've had a good executive session today and a nice little work session. And before we move into our formal ceremonial items and then move into our regular agenda, we want to take a minute to recognize an outgoing councilman, Steve Massengill. I think it's important, anytime we have people that commit their lives to giving back to our community, that we recognize them. And so I wanted Steve to be here today so we could formally thank him for his years of service to the city of Lubbock. Steve, would you please have your, the people with you and your family stand up? Stephanie, whoever can recognize you. Steve served on the Lubbock City Council for eight years. He was first elected to represent District 4 in 2016. I had the pleasure of working with Steve for the last two years. But of course, like everyone else, I knew him before he was elected, not as well. And Steve has been a leader in Lubbock for a long time. And prior to serving on council, he served with the Lubbock Independent School Districts, with the school board. He chaired the Lubbock Chamber of Commerce and served on a number of other boards and nonprofits. He also sold a lot of T-shirts in Stanglemurdo back in my day. And this is a city council, when he was on city council, he was always helping, always there and willing to work and help make change. So his leadership on the council led to many major projects. I can't name them all. But the first, Lubbock's first new comprehensive land use plan in 30 years. He secured and helped substantially secure funding for the state Veteran Cemetery, which is an incredible project we're going to see come to fruition here shortly. And approving and implementing the Public Safety Improvements Project that saw three brand-new stations and a beautiful new police headquarters. He worked closely with community partners to encourage growth and investment both downtown and throughout the city. This includes working with the Lubbock Economic Development to encourage new employers such as La Prino Foods. We're all very proud of that project. Come to the Hub City, supporting Downtown Central Business Tiff to encourage redevelopment. And Steve played an incredible and key role in South Plains College opening their campus in downtown Lubbock. There's a lot, again, I could say, to summarize. The bottom line is Steve worked hard and gave a lot of his own personal time to our community. And I know he's passionate. I think you see it from being an Eagle Scout, serving as his father did in our community. He's been passionate about community service. So Steve, at this time, we've got a few gifts that we would like to give you. They've got those somewhere in the back. Come on out, Kristen. A few things, can't really, come on up, sorry, yeah. Come on up. Thanking you for your time and service. Come on. Few things to give you, Kristen. That's kind of heavy, don't drop that.
Well, I thought this was already boxed.
No, that's, no, we had to pull it back out.
I already got one boxed.
It's a nice, nice little frame. Your picture that's set there, and you, we thought you might want the one from 2016 because you were younger. But we went with that one. And of course, your street sign, and then some awesome challenge coins that you can keep.
Well, thank you very much.
And with that, I'd like to turn the floor over to you, if you want to say a few remarks.
Oh, I'm at...
I'll stand over here and hold your street sign.
Thanks. I appreciate it, all the gifts. And I, I want to thank everybody for being here. A lot of our, a lot of my close friends are here, even members of our campaign team, and I'm grateful for them being here to help recognize my service. So let me just thank a few groups that are important that I'll sit down. First, I want to thank the council that I served on for the last two years. Some of you I knew, some of you I didn't. But we got to know each other quickly, and I feel like we did some great work. So thank you to those of you who are here, and the new, the new folks. Good to see your faces. I want to especially thank Trey. Trey and I could have easily been on opposite ends of a ballot, and we didn't end up there. But I've been grateful to serve with him and to call him a friend. I would tell the current council, good luck to all of you. Oh, Mr. City Attorney, it's actually good to formally greet you here as I didn't sit on the dais with you. And I would tell the new council, get Broadway fixed if you can. It's something that we need to focus on, but good luck to all of you. And then I want to thank the council I served on with the prior council of six years. You know, I've been fortunate, all, all the elected bodies I've served on have been exceptional. But that group, we were able to get a lot of things done in a couple of years in the face of great adversity with a pandemic. So I'll always cherish that. So I want to thank the staff. Especially, I want to thank first Lubbock Fire Rescue and Lubbock Police Department. I want to thank the Fire Association. I've spent a lot of time with these guys and appreciate what they do and what they've done for me. You know, the staff, you're all my friends. And you do great work for the citizens. So my hat's off to you, and I'll always be there to support you. I was really going to try to do this without doing this. Anyway, I, they toil every day to make sure everything works here in the city. And don't ever forget that, because there's a lot of times that they, they catch the bad into the stick. And so, anyway, I'll miss you guys. I want to thank my mom and dad for being here. Trey mentioned it, but I can't remember how many years Dad had in here, but served the city well. I want to thank Steph and Audrey. Audrey's not here. She's duly employed this summer, which is a big deal. But, you know, when you sit up here, it's easier to process when you sit up here than it is for those at the house to process when you bring it home. And so they ultimately made the greatest sacrifice. It's been one of the greatest honors of my life to serve the city of Lubbock. And lastly, I'll just tell you that I'm, I'm thankful that the citizens allowed me to do it for eight years. So sorry, didn't mean to break up, but thank you all very much. I think I'll put the street sign.
Oh, you don't want the green? It clashes with, it clashes with our blues.
See if we can get a picture.
Where do you own us? Okay, let's go this way.
You know where I'm at?
I know. You're in District 2.
You know, I'm not much for pomp and circumstance. I think it's against my nature to want to be recognized. And I had a conversation with Sheila a couple of weeks ago. And she said, it's important that we teach our kids to give thanks, not only, not only to God for the blessings, but also to give thanks for people that give their time. Agree or disagree, or somewhere in the middle, we need to be grateful for our community servants and, uh, community leaders and public servants. So I think that was really important. So thank you all for being involved with that. All right, this time, we're going to move to our invocation. We have Pastor Todd Sons with St. Matthew United Methodist Church. He wanted me to let you know he's been at kids camp, so he's kind of in comfy clothes. So if you all please stand and then... if you all please stand and then remain standing after the invocation, we'll move immediately to our pledges led by Mayor Pro Tim Patterson-Harris.
Amen. Thank you. Will y'all join me as we pray together? Father, we are grateful and we are thankful. And Father, today, I want to come and I want to lift these that are before me, Father, up in prayer to you right now. Father, as we move from the old to the new, Father, as we move from birth to being born again, Father, as we journey from the Alpha to the Omega. Lord, there are those among us right now who have served and are tired, and those that are coming to serve that will be tired. And Father, there are those among us right now here that have given all that they can and are giving out. And there are those that are coming that will give themselves out and pour themselves out in service to this community. And for all, now, God, I pray this blessing and this prayer, Father, over the unwavering discernment of, of, of who they are in the public eye, over the unwavering discernment, Father, of being tossed to and fro from politics, Father, today, right now, in this special moment, wipe away the podiums and the speeches and the microphones, and let them just sit in your lap.
Yes, Lord.
As you're a precious child of God, Lord. No matter the public opinion or the criticism or the ridicule, Father, let them always remember, it's not who this world says that they are, but it is who you say that they are, God. So thank you for these humble servants, Lord. Bless them and their families as they go and give. And Lord Jesus, it's not for the pay, God. It's their hearts that come before you to serve our community. Bless them, Jesus, and all of God's people set.
Amen. Thank you so much. If you would join us as we offer the pledge to the United States and Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you. You may be seated.
Thank you, Pastor, for being with us today. All right, we will now move into our regular agenda and call everyone to order, and we will immediately move to item number four, which is citizen comments. This time, we have Mr. Alex Scarborough here to speak on Agenda Item 7.8.
Hello, I'm Alex Scarborough from 3009 Mesa, Kristi Martinez-Garcia's district. Thank you all for having me here today, and I am grateful for each of y'all serving. Thank y'all for your service. I'm calling to bring your attention to this item. In the past, we didn't notify people by this method that I think is going to be used or recommended. It's called alternative notification. I, I'm a landowner, and I got a call from my neighbor, Mark McDougall, and he said, Scarborough, what'd you do to us? I said, I don't know what you're talking about. He said, our zoning's changed. So I didn't change my zoning. I didn't change mine either. And as I began to investigate it, I found out when the Uniform Development Code rolled in, we changed names of everything. I got moved from a transitional zoning to a single family. That's my land that I'm describing is in front of Fort Goff on Brownfield Highway. I don't think it's single family. At any rate, that got moved there without me noticing it. Now, I got told that it was, the notice was going to be on Facebook or YouTube, or I could check the public access channel. And I, I just, I'm not a YouTuber. I'm not a Facebook person. And I think our relationship to citizens is worth 65 cents to send them a, a letter. And so I stand in opposition, and I recommend that you do not adopt alternative notification for matters that affect people's property. I think they should be notified in a traditional bi-mail way. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, sir. All right, that's all we have for citizen comments. We'll now move to Agenda Item Five and 5.1. 5.1 is approval of the minutes from the regular city council meeting of May 28th and the special city council meeting of swearing in of our illustrious chief on June 3rd of 2024. Is there a motion to approve?
No.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez-Garcia.
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Wilson. All in favor of approval of the minutes under 5.1, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you. Motion carries seven zero. All right, now I'm next moving to our consent agenda. Let's go ahead and move to 6.9. I think there was a lot of questions from council, so I'm going to pull that out at this time. I think the questions, Mr. Wade, some of these questions were legal questions concerning the contract, and then I think there were also some policy discussions. But I think before we get to the policy discussions, we may want to get briefed up a bit on the legal.
Okay.
So I think we had maybe some suggestions of moving this to date certain, putting it in executive session, so it'd give y'all some time to discuss the legalities.
That certainly would be the cleanest way to do it.
Okay. Is that, is that kind of the understanding I had? Okay. Also, you know, date certain, we can't put an agenda item indefinitely, but we can certainly move it to a date certain. I don't necessarily know that we want to let this thing last out there for months and months, but open to date certain to give them time to kind of get legally eased up on it and then move it to executive session. Is that what I'm hearing? Is there any type of thoughts from council on what, when you'd want to move this to, since it will be your next, it'll be your baby to deal with, I guess. Mr. Gashin?
Mr. Mayor, I would move to postpone it to date certain of September 24th, regularly scheduled city council meeting.
All right, for executive session, and then put this on the agenda item immediately thereafter?
Yes, sir.
All right, is there a reason for, it's three months?
In conversation with staff, I believe that would give us adequate time to review the court, the scope of work and consult with legal.
All right, we have a motion to 9/24 of 2024. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, thank you, Mr. Rose. All right, discussion on that. The only, the only reason I would hesitate to say 9/24 is I would, I kind of want to know from staff whether that puts us three months behind on the overlay map, which is a necessity. Mr. Atkinson, what, is, is there a timeframe where this is, maybe needs to be moved up if it's going to happen, or is there a time for, if it moves to staff as, as opposed to hiring a consultant, that they would, that would put them behind three months?
Yeah.
If that makes sense.
It, it does, I believe. So if I get off track, Mayor, please pull me back. Whether it goes forward either as a staff review or the way we've got it proposed, which is in response to council instructions from roughly nine months ago, there's not a deadline on us to do this. I would note that you heard a, a citizen's comment about how the T-zones moved to the R-zones. That's specifically one of the items for this, you know, this project to try to address. We, we can do it in-house. It's just going to take longer to get it done. If it stays with some outside help to do it, we're just pushing the start date a bit. There is no overriding deadline that's on you.
Anybody have any other questions or further discussion on 6.9 moving to September 24th? All right, Mr. Collins?
Has paid any cost change to the proposal if it's delayed?
Mr. Atkinson? We don't know. I guess we wouldn't know if we delay it.
We won't know that till we know the direction and the changes to the scope. I don't think changes to the scope will be an issue that drives cost. Time may.
All right, motion and a second on moving Agenda Item 6.9 to date certain September 24th of 2024. All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion carries seven zero. We'll move that to executive session on 6.9, or on 9/24, and then follow up with regular council agenda on that date. All right, now we're going to move back. We've got some general discussion, I think, on 6.5 and then 6.8. So I'll turn over 6.5 to you, Mr. Atkinson.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to go ahead and ask Mr. Colby Van Gundy to approach if that's all right with the mayor. 6.5 is some follow-up work that we're putting together as it relates to the bathrooms that were installed under the ARPA, American Rescue Plan Act, funding. So, Colby?
Thank you, sir. The request today is on the, the two bathrooms at Maxi and Clapp Park. Both of those, when we, when we originally gave the suggestion of, of putting those into the project and stuff, we didn't feel like we had any worries or not. What has happened is that for us to get above the floodplain, we had to elevate the restroom up higher. And so, and so the pad that we elevated got, was, of course, cost more. And then we also had to take the building and make it where it was floodproof. And so basically it allows water to come in and then exit, the exit, and so it doesn't change our floodzones or anything of that nature. With those, you had a, a, additional cost that came in. And so that's what we're requesting today.
And my note, Mayor, the funding for this is coming from the walking, the appropriated allocated money to the walking trails.
All right, any questions of Colby at this time? Ms. Patterson-Harris?
Mrs. Jarrett, would you repeat that last statement that you made?
This is, the actual, the action for this one is to move the 100,000 from the walking trail line item
Okay.
into this to cover those increased costs because of the flood zones.
Thank you. And that's, that was my question. The fact that we're moving that, those funds to address this issue, will that impact getting the walking trails in the specific parks that we have designated?
No, ma'am, it will not change that. If you recall, along with this budget, there was a capital program, a capital project to do the May Simmons Cross Country Trail. And so we've got a real, a great idea of what our cost per square foot is going to be. We've already secured a contract that has our granite gravel, so that cost will not change. And so we feel very confident that we'll still be able to, we're not decreasing the, the length or any of the amenities that would have gone into each one of those trails.
Okay. That was just my, my biggest concern
Yes, ma'am.
Because one of those parks to receive one of those trails is down the way
Sure.
from me, and I wanted to be sure that at some point I'd have the opportunity to take advantage. And I didn't want the fact that we were moving these funds down to impact that.
No, ma'am, it will not.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Patterson-Harris. Anybody else have any comments or questions on 6.5? All right, thank you, Colby. All right, Mr. Atkinson, 6.8?
Okay, item 6.8 actually was teased a little bit during the work session. So the contract before you today is the replacement of just under 14,000 linear feet of old eight-inch waterline, and this is in the Dunbar Manhattan Heights area. So again, there were three phases to this project. The first was to do the sidewalks, the concrete, the ramps, the valley gutters, et cetera. That's, that's almost finished. This is to put entirely new water lines in that neighborhood. These lines are in the streets. They're not in the alleys. So this is to put brand-new water lines in. And then the final phase, the part that comes back on your street bond, is to put the new roads in.
Ms. Patterson-Harris?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That was me again. I just really kind of wanted to kind of highlight that a little bit so that the citizens within that area can kind of follow and see how this, this project is progressing, in addition to other citizens, so that they'll know the items that they voted, voted for in the bond package are happening. So, and realize that those funds are going specifically for the things that they elected for them to do. So thank you for the information.
All right, thank you, Ms. Patterson-Harris. All right, any other questions on 6.5 or 6.8 for staff? All right, if there's no objection, Ms. Patterson-Harris, I'll pull those, put those back into the consent agenda. So at this time, council, I would ask for a motion to approve the 6.1 through 6.15 exclusive of 6.9.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Rose. Thank you, Ms. Martinez-Garcia. All right, all in favor of approval of our consent agenda, 6.1 through 6.15 exclusive of 6.9, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion carries seven zero. We're now moving to our regular agenda. We'll start with board appointments. Counsel, if there's no objection, I will read the board name, then the new recommended committee member, and then I'll read those for every board, and then we can take one collective vote, if that's, works for everyone. Okay? Y'all, don't be judging me. Don't laugh. All right, I'll start with the Appointments Advisory Board. We have a recommendation to reappoint Brett Underwood and Ryan Henry. Then we also have a recommendation that Colton Davis will fill the remainder of the term vacated by David Gashin, our infamous council member. And that will be the subsequent term, three-year term beginning on September 1st of 2024. So Mr. Davis will replace Mr. Gashin for the term vacated. We have a recommendation for Amy Sykes to replace Kristy Laverty, and for Kathy Allen to replace Margaret Randall. Moving to the Building Board of Appeals, we have a recommendation to reappoint Russell Toma and Jeremy Steen, and then to replace Alexander Salter with Sandy Bagwell, and Alex Cardenas with Ricardo Martinez. We have a recommendation to reappoint Jay House to the Canadian River Municipal Water Authority Board of Directors. Moving to Citizens Traffic Commission, we have a recommendation to reappoint Phyllis Gant Gambles and Patricia Francis Johnson, and to replace Jason Madrid with Glenn Patton. Next, we have the Lubbock Water Advisory Commission. We have a recommendation to replace Donna McAllister with Dr. Shane Walker, replace Dr. Melanie Barnes with Kelly Davila, and to replace Steve Verrett with Ray Lazada. Moving next to the Model Codes and Construction Advisory Board, we have a recommendation to replace Glenn Davis with George Hinson, and to replace Steven Scruggs with Mr. Gordon Wilkerson. Next, moving to Permit and License Appeal Board, we have a recommendation to reappoint Cecilia Garcia and Brooks Jones, and to replace Tariq Redwin with David Saunders. And then lastly, the Star Care Board of Trustees, we have a recommendation to replace William Carter with Ray Mendoza, and to reappoint Robert Kazi and Brian Shannon. All right, those are all the ones listed under Agenda Item 7.1. I'd entertain a motion to approve those names.
No.
Thank you, Dr. Wilson. Thank you, Mr. Collins. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on those appointments read into the record? All right, all in favor of approval of those names read under 7.1, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion carries seven zero. In a similar vein, we have 7.2, which is the consideration of the appointment to the Lubbock Rees Redevelopment Authority Board of Directors. We have a recommendation to replace Mr. Tim Collins with Brian Kimberly. Is there a motion to approve of that appointment?
No.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Can he take that? Is he all right taking that as a motion?
Yes.
All right. No, that's all right. I'm just making sure. You're replacing yourself. I'd never want to vote on replacing myself. All right, thank you, Mr. Collins, and thank you, Ms. Martinez-Garcia, for the second. All in favor of approval of the appointment to Brian, of Brian Kimberly to Rees, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion carries seven zero. All right, council, we'll now move to our public hearings, which are 7.3 through 7.7. I, I think, and again, y'all point out, if there's any disagreement, I think seeing these all as somewhat unopposed, I would like to see if Ms. Sager can kind of run through those and give us information, and then I can open up the public hearings collectively. those and give us information, and then I can open up the public hearings collectively, and then if we have questions, obviously she and staff or the proponents are, are here and available. Does that sound good to you?
Yeah.
All right, Ms. Sager, we're gonna go ahead and let you run through seven three, four, five, six, and seven.
Okay.
Give us the background on those, and then we'll open up the public hearings and circle back to you.
Okay. Item seven three is zone case thirty-three-ten B, the applicant is Seventeen Services, and their request is to rezone property from office to neighborhood commercial. We sent out 34 notifications, receiving zero responses. This property is located north of 142nd Street and west of Quaker Avenue. Here's an aerial view of the subject property, it is mainly vacant around the property with the developing neighborhood to the northwest. Current zoning is office, there is additional office and neighborhood commercial along Quaker Avenue. Future land use plan designates this property for low-density residential land uses. And here are some photos of the subject property and surrounding area. Here's a site plan provided by the applicant showing their proposed development. The future land use map designation for low-density residential is not consistent with the request, but the request is appropriate in this location along a major thoroughfare. It is in conformance with the zoning ordinance and compatible with the surrounding area. It will not change the character of the existing development. 142nd Street is designated as a local street, and Quaker Avenue is designated as a principal arterial. Staff recommended approval of this request, and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval with unanimous vote. Item seven four is zone case thirty-three-ten C, the applicant is AMD Engineering, their request is for a zone change from low-density residential SF2 to neighborhood commercial. We sent out 16 notifications, receiving no response. This property is located north of 146th Street, west of Quaker Avenue. Aerial view of the subject property, it is completely vacant around the property, there is developing neighborhood to the north. Current zoning is SF2, and the future land use plan designation is residential low-density. Here are some photos of the subject property and surrounding area. And a graphic provided by the applicant showing the proposed area, this is Area A, the next case will be Area B. Future land use map designation for low-density residential is not consistent with the request, but the request is appropriate in this location, it's in conformance with the zoning ordinance compatible with the surrounding area. 146th Street is a principal arterial. Staff recommended approval, and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval with unanimous vote. Item seven five, zone case thirty-three-ten D, AMD Engineering is the applicant with a request for a zone change from SF2 to neighborhood commercial. We sent out 21 notifications, receiving no response. This property is located north of 146th, west of Quaker Avenue. Aerial view of the subject property, currently vacant. It is currently zoned SF2, there is auto-urban commercial to the east with additional office along Quaker. Future land use plan designation is for residential low-density. And here are some photos of the subject property and surrounding area. Graphic provided by the applicant, this is Area B. Future land use map designation is not consistent with the request, but again, the request is appropriate in this location. 146th Street is a principal arterial. Staff recommended approval, and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval with unanimous vote. Item seven six, zone case thirty-three-oh-three C, the applicant is Seventeen Services, request for a zone change from IP to auto-urban commercial AC. We sent out 46 notifications, receiving two in favor, one in opposition. The one in opposition did not provide any additional comment. This property is located north of 122nd Street, east of Frankfurt Avenue. Here's the response map showing the two properties that responded in favor and the one in opposition. Aerial view of the subject property, there is existing commercial development to the north and south, residential to the east. Current zoning is industrial park, there is additional industrial park to the north with a mix of neighborhood commercial, heavy commercial, office along Frankfurt Avenue, and then medium-density residential and low-density residential to the east. Future land use plan designates this property for residential low-density. Here are some photos of the subject property and surrounding area. Future land use map designation for residential low-density is not consistent with the request, however, this is actually a downzone from industrial park to auto-urban commercial, a more restrictive district. It is appropriate in this location along a thoroughfare. It is compatible with the surrounding area and the existing businesses, and will serve as a buffer between the neighborhood and Frankfurt Avenue. Frankfurt Avenue is designated as a minor arterial. Staff recommended approval of this request, and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval with unanimous vote. Item seven seven, zone case nineteen forty-seven H, the applicant is Clovis Sign Service for Southwest Convenience Stores, their request is to rezone property from medium-density residential to auto-urban commercial. We sent out 19 notifications, receiving one in favor. This property is located north of 34th, west of Frankfurt Avenue. Here's the response map of the one in favor. Here's an aerial view of the subject property, the property is developed with an existing convenience store and gas station, there is additional residential development to the north and other commercial along 34th. Current zoning is medium-density residential, there is a mix of high-density residential, heavy commercial, auto-urban commercial, and low-density residential in this area. The future land use plan designates this property for commercial land uses. And here are some photos of the subject property and surrounding area. This is a graphic provided by the applicant showing the proposed location for new signs for the store. The future land use map designation is for commercial land uses, which is consistent with the request, the zone change is in conformance with the zoning ordinance and appropriate in this location. It is compatible with the surrounding area and will not change the character of the existing development. 34th Street is designated as a minor arterial, and Frankfurt is a, not a collector, it would be a minor arterial as well. Staff recommends approval of this request, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval with unanimous vote. And I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
All right, thank you, Kristen, may stick close by. All right, those in the audience that may have a desire to speak on the public hearings, when I open up the public hearings, I will open up those wishing to speak in opposition, and then I will open up the mic, the podium for those wishing to speak in favor. As you come forward, please state your name and your address, and speak on which agenda item you are speaking on. I'm going to open up the public hearing at this time as to agenda items seven point three, seven point four, seven point five, seven point six, and seven point seven. So when you come forward, please state your name and which of those agenda items you are speaking on. This time, public hearing is open, anyone here wishing to speak in opposition to any of those, you may step forward at this time. All right, seeing none, I will now open up the public hearing to those wishing to speak in favor of those agenda items, you may step forward at this time. All right, no callers. Going once, all right. I will now close the public hearing. Is there a motion to approve Agenda Items seven point three through seven point seven? Thank you, Ms. Martinez-Garcia. Thank you, Dr. Wilson. All right, do we have any discussion, questions on these agenda items of staff, of Ms. Sager, or possibly any of the proponents that are maybe in the crowd that did not want to step forward? All right, seeing none? All in favor of approval of Agenda Items seven three through seven seven, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, those carry seven zero. We're now move to Agenda Item seven point eight. Ms. Sager?
Thank you, Mayor. Item seven point eight is to consider a resolution prescribing the type of notice to be given for a joint meeting of the City Council and Planning and Zoning Commission for a public hearing to consider amendments to the Unified Development Code. As part of our requirements for this process, we have to provide notification to our citizens regarding this public hearing. Since the Unified Development Code affects every property within the city, the council has the option of approving by a two-thirds vote an alternative notice process. This is the same process we used when adopting the Unified Development Code in May of 2023, and when amending it in October of 2023. So this is the proposed timeline, we did have a work session with the Planning and Zoning Commission at their regular meeting on June 6th to present the amendments to them and get feedback. Our proposal today is for council to consider a resolution to the alternative notice, notification process. If approved, that process will run July 2nd through July 3rd. Joint hearing would be Thursday, July 25th, and then if no action is taken at the joint hearing, the Planning and Zoning Commission could take action at their regular meeting August 1st, and then council August 13th and August 27th. The alternative notice consists of several different aspects, social media postings in English and Spanish, newspaper legal notices, running ads on the city's public access channel, the city's YouTube channel and Nextdoor platform, the Citizens Tower lobby monitor broadcast, adding links to our, the homepage of the City of Lubbock website, direct mail to neighborhood associations, media releases and media advisories, again, in both English and Spanish, handing out flyers at Citizens Tower, utilities, customer service center, libraries, community centers, and museums, and then a hard copy of the amendments printed and available to the public in the lobby of our department. And I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Ms. Sager, could you give us an example of a possible amendment to the UDC that, that will be actually happening, what type of amendments we're looking at?
There are a few, it's mainly cleanup items, it's things we didn't catch the first go-around, or maybe now that we've put it into practice, we see it's not really working and it needs to be changed. One, that's literally a cleanup, there is a setback requirement in the medium-density residential district that duplexes have a 10-foot side setback, side setback, instead of a five-foot side setback, so that is something that needs to be adjusted.
All right, so, you know, we talked about, I think we had some zone change hearings last council meeting, Mr. McLendon had presented, there were some transition changes, a little, you know, Mr. Scarborough came up and talked about that, that property that-
Right.
-that the McDougals had, explain a bit more about, to council about those situations, what happened?
So you have properties that were developed outside city limits, and then later annexed, and so whenever property gets annexed under the former code, it was automatically zoned transition district. The transition district followed the R1 or R1A zoning district under the former code, depending on when the property was plotted. When we adopted the Unified Development Code, properties that were zoned transition, R1 or R1A, became the SF2, low-density residential district. So it didn't change the predicament that the property was in, it was in that same predicament already, because the transition district had the same rules and regulations as low-density residential. So as part of the zoning map analysis, those are properties we would like to get cleaned up and have rezoned.
All right, thank you. We're not talking about zone changes here with, under this notice provision that are directly going to affect existing properties, these are cleanups in the UDC code that could affect mostly future properties, et cetera?
Yes, these are cleanups to the regulations, we are not proposing to rezone anything.
All right. What, I think we briefly discussed, because we did this with the alternate, alternate notification with the original UDC, what was the cost savings, do you remember that number, we looked at cost savings by doing alternative service?
So, to mail a letter to every property owner within the entire city, going by parcel, so it was about 101,000 parcels, and we were going to have to outsource that to another company to do the printing and folding and mailing, and it was probably 36, $38,000 versus, this is mostly done in-house. We'll have the legal notice with the newspaper, but that is substantially less.
All right, thank you, Ms. Sager. Ms. Martinez-Garcia?
Thank you, Kristen. I know that we're trying to save money, and I think Mr. Scarborough does have a point with, you know, we are trying to save money, and I think Mr. Scarborough can understand that, but in reviewing everything, I think probably the direct mail to neighborhood associations is a very important piece, but when you have neighborhoods like the area that he lives in, there are no neighborhood associations, so is there anything else, I mean, Mr. Scarborough, what do you, what resource can we connect you to, because we have a very varied list of alternative notices, but I mean, being in this business myself, I know that this is, that everything has been thought of other than that direct mail piece, but how do we connect those folks that could potentially get left out, and as you saw the last meeting, it was necessary to connect them?
Right. And, you know, I feel like this is pretty substantial, we tried to cover all areas, newspaper, media, social media, because you're gonna have varying, you know, groups and age groups who are gonna go to those different things, and so, I, I honestly don't know what else to add to this list, but I'm open to suggestions, if there's anything else you want us to add.
It's, I mean, I feel like we were very thorough-
Mm-hmm.
-and I want to make sure that we are including everybody, but it is really tough, because the mediums, each of them are changing so much, and, I mean, look, $38,000 is significant, so, you know, I, could we, do we have email access to, that we could get certain people that want to be added?
Sure, yeah, we could.
Mr. Scarborough, I know he's still in the audience, would that be something that would be helpful to you?
I think this is important.
Maybe come, come, no, sorry, okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
It is, like I said, we have gone through this with a fine-tooth comb, and, I mean, I feel like we've gotten almost everything that you possibly could do. I think most folks that are in the business aspect would probably be looking at the newspaper, and it is a digital also, but maybe we could also supplement this with a press release?
Sure, absolutely.
And that way, it's already on there, never mind, and we have it in English and Spanish, we really have thought of everything, and Mr. Scarborough, I personally will call you, maybe that would be the best way, but, I mean, it, it's just, it's so difficult, because we really are trying to reach citizens, and using every platform we possibly could except for the mail piece, and it's not that we don't support, you know, the postal service, it's just that we are trying to use things that are a little bit more modern.
Mm-hmm. To your point about the email, we could directly email groups we work with, like the West Texas Home Builders Association, the Chamber of Commerce, and they could distribute it to their membership as well.
To neighborhood associations and associations that, you know, in general.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Ms. Martinez-Garcia, Ms. Patterson-Harris?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When you say, uh, social media, what are you speaking of?
That will be through our communications and marketing department, so they would have to tell you specifically how they do that.
Are they here to share that with us specifically?
I do not know. On Twitter? On Twitter. And Facebook. And Nextdoor.
Twitter, Facebook, and Nextdoor.
And our YouTube channel as well.
Okay, because there's still other, uh, social media platforms-
Mm-hmm.
-that folks use, that, and I'm guilty of it, some of us who are kind of up in age a little bit, we don't use, like, I don't Snapchat.
Sure.
And some of those other things, but a lot of folks, Instagram, or they call it Insta, or whatever, so, I, I want to make sure that whatever platforms we're using, we're able to reach, uh, 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 the, as large of a number of folks as we can. I, I, myself, I'm on Facebook, but some stuff I miss, I never know, because I don't travel, I, what they call it, scrolling, and whatever you do, I don't, I don't scroll. So I just want us, whatever we're using, that we're using means that will actually reach the folks that will, have the potential of reaching the folks that, that we're trying to, and I'll ask this question, in the past, which of these worked best for us when notifying the public? Have we kept up with that, or we're just- Have we kept up with that, or we just, or we just put it out there blindly?
You know, I don't know that I had a large response from any particular item. You know, of course, citizens that walked into our office, we had the hard copy right there. We had the flyers. We could talk to them about it right then and there. I think social media typically gets a lot of views. We publish legal notices in the newspaper every month, and I know there's a handful of people that see them. I'm not sure how many do, but that is a requirement we would have to do regardless of whether or not we do this alternative notice process. We get a lot of traffic on our website, you know, even when we're talking with citizens about another issue, we can go ahead and direct them to the website and have them take a look at it as well.
And a lot of these locations are connected to or within the city. Have we considered maybe putting some information out there outside of the city? And I noticed you indicated neighborhood associations. That is stated. Not everybody has a neighborhood association. However, there are some folks who attend church, who may have announcements. I'm kind of go to old-school churches where you get up there and get the announcements. Announcements, they may have boards that they put the information on. I just, with Mr. Scarborough coming here and saying, hey, this doesn't serve me. So I just wanted to make sure, and if he has that to say, I guarantee you there's some other folks who have that to say. And so I just want us to make sure that we do everything that we can to reach everybody or as many citizens as we can. I'm not going to ask Mr. Scarborough if he goes to church, or if we send an announcement to the church, if he get it. But I want to use everything that we can utilize to reach as many folks as we can.
We can absolutely reach out to churches within the city, or even, you know, grocery stores, places that people frequent. We can do that.
Yes, ma'am. There's different organizations and what have you that we can do. Because it's always been, it's always been an issue for us. How do we get people? How do we reach folks? And we've just really not nailed it 100% or even 90%, and I just want to make sure that we do that so that we, and thanks, Mr. Scarborough, for bringing that to our attention. That's all I got. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Patterson-Harris. Ms. Martinez Garcia?
I just have one more recommendation, and that is the utility bill insert. We do not have that listed, but we're already sending a bill. So I think if we design that insert, which it does have a certain requirement, but we could probably get that printed in-house, still save some money, and then insert it in the, I mean, the City of Lubbock Utilities mail out that they do monthly.
We discussed that. The reason it is not on this list is because it was too late to do it for the July billing.
So it's all about timing, but then the only other thing, and by the way, Facebook does cater to an older audience, just FYI. But I don't know what else we can do. I think adding the associations is going to be...
And we do have a representative from Communications and Marketing, if you would like for her to go into more detail on the social media.
All right, thank you very much. All right. Matt, did you have something to add? I don't think I heard an amendment in there anywhere. So I don't think I'll have to ask for an amendment.
That's, that's all I was going to ask, Mayor. You have your exhibit on the resolution, Exhibit B, which specifically outlines what the notice is, so.
Specifically is in there. Did we, did I call for a motion in a second on that yet? All right. Is there a motion on 7.8? Thank you, Mr. Rose. Is there a second? Thank you, Dr. Wilson. All right, I will say I agree with several things stated. We're always trying to figure out ways to have people informed. I mean, this is the digital age. At some point, you know, we're going to have to figure out, you know, ways to get people to pay attention in other forms and fashions other than mail. I think this is a cost savings to the taxpayer. I think this is a good way to do this. We did it before. I would be willing, if you look through, and maybe we should have asked Mr. Scarborough this, which specific item he is personally affected by these changes? But I think we will definitely have people reach out to you and let you know. I don't even know that you are going to be affected by any of these changes in the UDC, but we'll certainly check on that for you. All right, we have any other discussion? All right, we have a motion in a second. All in favor of approval of 7.8, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion carries seven zero. All right, lastly, we have the resolution for the canvassing of the runoff election dated June 15th of 2024, canvassing the returns and declaring the return to the City of Lubbock special runoff election. Ms. Paz, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. A runoff election was held on June 15th, 2024, to elect a mayor and city council member for District 2. I will read the results into the record, and placed in front of you are copies of the resolution with the numbers. Candidates for mayor, Steve Massingale received 4,587 votes. Mark McFrayer received 11,891 votes. There was a total of 16,478 votes in that race. Candidates for city council District 2, Gordon Harris received 872 votes. Ana Menjares received 638 votes. There was a total of 1,510 votes in that race. The total votes cast in this election were 16,478. Persons receiving a majority of these votes, Mark McFrayer for mayor, Gordon Harris, city council District 2. I recommend you accept the election, return, and approve the resolution.
All right, thank you, Gordon. We appreciate that very much. Is there a motion to approve this resolution? Thank you, Ms. Martinez Garcia. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Collins. All right, any discussion on those results? All right, all in favor of approval of Agenda Item 7.9 and the returns read into the record by our city secretary, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, 7.9 carries seven zero. All right, thank you all for being here today. Really want to point out that, thank you Maggie Trejo for being here today. It's always good to see your face. Former council member, Mr. Boran, was also here, and I was going to make fun of him for something. I'm not even sure what it was. But we do appreciate all of you being here today. We'll be back here in a little over an hour for our special ceremony to swear in our new city council member and our mayor, and with that, we are adjourned.